Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas, Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes twenty four dash zero five two three for Tuesday, July second, twenty twenty four. Committee of the Whole Meeting is moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Any corrections, additions, or deletions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried by a voice vote. Clayton, we have Mayor's report. Anything to report? No? Huh? No? Okay, so we'll go to the public comment then. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer a public comment?
We do.
Okay. Will you please read the rules for public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the Committee of the Whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the Committee of the Whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you please read the name of the first person to offer a public comment?
Cynthia Martinez.
Cynthia Martinez, is she here? Apparently not. Do we have anyone else wishing to give a public comment?
We do. Vanessa Aguirre.
Vanessa, are you here?
I'm here, but Cynthia just.
Oh, Cynthia, would you like to step forward and give a public comment?
Yeah. Sorry, I've been sleeping in parking.
You're just in time.
Anywhere?
Anyone, and you'll be given three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hello, sorry that I was late. I'm here to speak today on behalf of El Paso. For many immigrants, the first place that feels home in the United States isn't the place they live in, but the place they buy their ingredients for their home-cooked meals. El Paso has always represented this safe place in Aurora. In an era dominated by big-box retailers and online conglomerates, it's significant to support local businesses like El Paso. It cannot be overstated. These neighborhood establishments play a vital role in our fabric of our community. I recently filled out a survey that the city sent out about the importance of what I like about Aurora, the number one reason that I've been a lifelong resident, choose to work. I'm a teacher here. It's because of community, because of places like El Paso, because of the sense of nostalgia that the city has. There's shared memories. If I say El Paso, anybody from Aurora knows what I'm talking about. It is definitely a place that not only my family during the holidays, during celebrations we use, but on an everyday. I can find local produce. I can find healthy produce that I can't find in any other of those big chains that are eventually becoming monopolized because of the buyouts. So I think it's really important. And I think West Aurora, I mean, I know for a fact that West Aurora would love to have El Paso Grande because I have a lot of friends who live on the west side. Christmas time, it's the only place that you can actually get corn, tortilla masa to make tortilla tamales handmade, like the original handmade. On top of that, there's food that's already readily available. So people who don't like to cook go all the time and pick up their produce. As an eighth-grade teacher at Fred Rogers Magnet Academy, every year the students end with an eighth-grade dance. The past two years, they have asked to have a celebration with food that accompanies their dance. They raise funds. And for the past two years, El Paso has catered their eighth-grade dance because that's what they want. So I feel like a staple like that in our community deserves the funds. In addition to that, local businesses tend to give back to their communities. El Paso, I know, donates a lot of food to St. Nicholas Parish when they do their church events and things like that. And I just kind of want to end with the fact that for me to be here and for other people who come to support, I think it shows how important we feel that maybe, you know, providing a loan forgiveness for an establishment like this that the citizens want is something that the council should take into account. So, and if you haven't been to El Paso, I suggest.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you very much. The clerk reads the, read the name of the next person.
Vanessa Aguirre.
Your three minutes will now begin.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Aguirre. I'm a lifelong resident of Aurora and I live on the west side in Ward Six. El Paso has been a staple on the east side of Aurora for many generations. They have always given back to their community and to new immigrants in the community. They are not like just a place to buy groceries. They are a place that provides a good sense of community also to people who are new in this country. I remember going there quite frequently with my grandmother and with my mom, with my mother, who at the time, when I was really young, didn't speak any English. And it was one of the very few places where she could shop at without a language barrier. And that was a very big deal for her and for our family. Having them on the west side would continue to be mutually beneficial to the community because it would fill a space that has been vacant for several years. They would provide jobs to local residents. The city would benefit as well as they would earn sales tax and property tax revenue. And according to most recent census data, almost half of the population in the six oh five oh six zip code is Hispanic, and we only have two Hispanic grocery stores on the west side, on this side of the river. So I support having them over on our side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any members, any more members in the public wishing to give a public comment?
Yes, the next speaker is Ken Darby.
You have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening.
Good.
I'm here to talk about El Paso. So I'm here on behalf of the Aurora East Education Foundation. A lot of you know about our annual golf outing coming up on Thursday, and we want to let you know a little bit about what we do. We've provided twenty-six two thousand dollar scholarships this year, three, four-year of them scholarships for a total of fifty-three thousand dollars this year. We have also given trade scholarships at approximately six thousand dollars this year, which sends people to a trade school or start their trade career instead of going to a four-year college. We also give mini grants for teachers that allows them to do those extra things during the school year that they normally wouldn't have the money for. So I'm here on behalf of the Aurora East Education Foundation and to thank you, Juanne Garza, Ted Masiacos, Bill Donald, Brandon Tolliver, and Mr. Ed Bug and Ron Warman for graciously donating your time and your money to what we do. It's a, I know what you do. You don't get thanks very often, but I personally want to thank you, and we'll see you at the golf outing. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to give a public testimony?
Yes, the next speaker is Adam Pauley.
You have three minutes beginning now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July tenth, the Human Services Committee met up at Kane County at the board, and they're voting on a pride resolution. There were two no votes. I'm here to encourage members of the public to reach out to their elected representatives, to encourage them to support that resolution, as it's been more of a battle this year to get it passed than it was last year. The Executive Committee is the next thing on the committee funnel for that, which takes place August eighth at nine a.m. It will be voted on by the Executive Committee, and if it passes there, it will go to the full county board the following Tuesday at nine forty-five a.m. That's the thirteenth. There were some concerns with it not being passed in June. However, last time I checked, I didn't disappear on July first, as no one does. You know, just because we have a month doesn't mean that the issues that are facing a certain community or a certain segment of the population go away. The county's voting on more than just a simple set of words, a simple set of documents. They're voting to affirm the rights and freedoms in this country and in our communities that do not exist in other places throughout our country, and exemplifying what makes Kane County and Aurora a great place to live. I encourage you and our residents to reach out to your elected representatives to vote yes on this. And this really feeds into other discussions that have been going on about making the county more community-oriented and more user-friendly, and asking how we do that. So I look forward to continuing to engage in those discussions. I thank you, and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to give a comment?
The next speaker is Daniel Dolan.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be here. I haven't seen you for a while. Haven't been before this board for quite some time. So I just really came here today. I really wanted to speak on behalf of Jamie Rodriguez and his family. I met Jamie quite some time ago. We were very involved over on the west side of Aurora. We have two little shopping centers that are at twenty-one twelve and twenty-one twenty-four, West Calina Boulevard. And then our partner to the south, or to the west of us is Phil Schalls from Ace Hardware. So for several years, I, for about two years, I had the Aldi, the vacant Aldi building for sale. I just happen to know the Aldi people very well. I, Alrick Walters happened to be my partner in a few things. And so we tried for two years to try to get a tenant in that property because we were suffering because of, our other tenants were suffering in our other shopping center because Aldi was a dynamic, kind of a anchor for us, and that we lost all the people that were coming through there. So I met Jamie and his family. I remember how proud they were, and, I mean, really, really challenged themselves if they really wanted to take this leap. Because this is, this family's been around for forty-some years in this business. It's a big step for them. They're, they're a small family firm, but they serve a heck of a lot of the public here. And I helped him, I helped him with him and his family make some decisions. We put the property under contract, and they bought it. And we all know what happens for the last several years in regards to the, kind of caught the end of COVID, supply chain issues, and then a terrible, which we all have affected our interest rate environment. And they've been caught into this, yet their family continues to do what they need to do to pay their bills, to keep this thing going. And they're so close on this thing, and I really think a family that's been in this community so far, so long, that has helped this community that we don't all even know what's happened. I really think they could have used some assistance here because with this, it will allow them to stock their shelves, get business, and start bringing some income in and paying taxes. And we are certainly very excited about and hoping to get that parking lot full again. So that's all I have to say, but I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dan. Any other member of the public wishing to give a public comment?
The last speaker is Juan Galvez.
You have three minutes beginning now.
My name is Juan Galvez, Vice President of the San Antonio Foundation, a nonprofit organization in the city of Aurora. For people who are not familiar with the San Antonio Foundation, we are a five zero one C three nonprofit organization, whose mission is to help kids with cancer, families that are in need, and things like that, to help them out hospital bills and whatever price they got to pay. The reason I'm here is to talk about El Paso. Jaime and the family have been a bit impact for us since day one, since we started our organization in twenty fifteen. Jaime has always supported us in doing donations for our nonprofit organization to help other families in need. For example, for Thanksgiving, he usually donates turkey, frozen turkeys. And then we actually match what he donates, we buy, so we can actually have one in our house, and people could come. Or we look for family, actually, are looking to have some, a decent meal for Thanksgiving. Same thing with Christmas. He does food for us as well, doesn't charge us. If it's not fancy, he's donating for us. It's always a product that we can raffle, a TV, or scooter, stuff like that, that we can actually raise money to keep our goals, to help those families in need. It's not just him, but hearing stories from my father, Mr. Polo, Jaime's dad, was a big impact also for the community. When my dad was childish back in the day, he would always give our family, not just my family, but other families, food, and then pay later whenever we had the chance. So he's been a big impact for, for our foundation. If it wasn't for him, we wouldn't be able to be where my brother's foundation is at right now, to help kids with cancer and stuff like that. He was a big impact. When my daughter was dying of cancer as well. He actually reached out to my brother, and he helped him out do an event to raise money to help me and my ex-wife pay medical bills and keep our mortgage, our mortgage paid, because none, none of us was working. My daughter has stage four cancer, and without his help and my brother, I don't think we'd have a house right now, or my daughters would be here right now. I'll be in desperate without our bills. But because of what he did for us and my brother, we're able to be wherever now. And we want to continue to help families that are in need, and we can't do this without him as well. So that's how he's a big impact for this community as well. It's not just us, but I'm, I'm sure he helps other people as well, like he donates food, like they said earlier. So that's why I'm here, to support why he's here and why we wish he could actually get this done as well. That, that's all for you guys. I, I give you guys a package. If you guys have time later on, you guys can actually look into it, and you guys get to know more about our nonprofit organization and what we do for our community. Thank you guys for your time.
And is that the finished, or last of the speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
The committee reports, then. Alderwoman, Chairman, Chairwoman.
Chairwoman, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The Building, Zone, and Economic Development Committee met on July tenth, twenty twenty four, and reviewed the following items. Twenty-four dash zero five one six, an ordinance annexing a portion of railroad property located east of Gordon Road, west of Orchard Road in Sugar Grove Township, Kane County, Illinois, to the city of Aurora pursuant to sixty-five ILCS five seven dash one dash eight. Twenty-four dash zero five one seven, an ordinance annexing property generally bound by the Kane County Forest Preserve to the east, ComEd Utility right away to the west, Progressive Baptist Church to the north, and the BNSF Railroad to the south in Sugar Grove Township, Kane County, Illinois, to the city of Aurora pursuant to sixty-five ILCS five seven one dash one three. The next two items are final appeal and no action needed. Twenty-four dash zero four seven eight, a resolution approving the final plot of lots one through five of Butterfield Phase Two subdivision, Unit five B, on vacant land located at twenty-seven twenty-five Bilter Road, being south of Bilter Road, west of Viola Road, and north of Interstate eighty-eight. And lastly, again, no action needed. Twenty-four dash zero four seven nine, a resolution approving a final plan for lots one through five of Butterfield Phase Two subdivision, Unit five B, located at twenty-seven twenty-five Bilter Road, being south of Bilter Road, west of Viola Road, and north Interstate eighty-eight for warehouse distribution and storage services, thirty-three hundred in the form of a data center only, and a telecommunications facility, forty-two eleven use.
Okay.
And that is all that we have.
I think we need to go back to twenty-four dash zero five one six and, and get a consensus at the Committee of the Whole as to where we place this on the agenda for next week.
Yes, we need to.
Either consent or unfinished business?
Consent.
Consent on five sixteen?
Unfinished?
Finished on five sixteen and five, five one seven.
Okay, unfinished on five one, zero five one six and zero five one seven.
Okay, and the rest are.
And the other two are for information only. Does anybody have any questions on those two?
That was final appealable, no action needed.
Yeah, I think the, the appealable period ends tomorrow. Is that correct?
It does not say here, but it says final appealable, no action needed at COW.
Correct.
That is all we have for the Building, Zone, and Economic Development. Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Alderman last.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if there's a, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, forgive me. I don't know if there's someone from staff. I just have a quick question on five sixteen and five seventeen. I know we hired special counsel for this. I'm just curious what we've already paid in legal fees to start this annexation process?
Good evening, Alex Alexander, Chief Management Officer. All relation, we do not have those bills in yet.
Okay, and then is there any assessment? A member of the public expressed some concern that the developer that's looking at this property at the county level has sued in the past. I don't know what anticipated legal fees we might have in addition to this, should we pursue this annexation?
The only reference we have is when Mr. Seben was at the board meeting, there was some gentleman saying he represented the group and made some reference to a possible lawsuit. But we, we are, we've assessed everything legally. We've looked at the city's rights and our responsibilities, and we're very comfortable in continuing this path and asking the council to approve these items. I can also tell you that we have filed a temporary restraining order against the county. That got activated, I believe, yesterday, Deb, or today, I'm not sure, to restrain them from issuing any permits.
All right, I'm going to follow up with an email to see if we can get some assessment on legal costs affiliated with the annexation. We don't, we don't know that there's going to be a suit, but if there is, we've already paid some legal fees affiliated with this already.
We have, but as long as I've been here, we've never let that be a determining factor to not taking the right action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tracy, I had a question on the two resolutions. That is appealable up until tomorrow at five o'clock. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, does staff have anything to present on those two?
No, not unless.
And you all of them have any questions on those two resolutions? Okay, thank you.
No, I'm, I'm finished. I said that's all we have for the BZNE. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Chairwoman Patty, Patty Smith. Chairman Carl Frankel, will you please give the Finance Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee met on July eleventh, twenty twenty four, and reviewed the following items, two four dash zero five two eight, a resolution approving a forgivable loan to Carnesaria El Paso Grande Corporation and Rodriguez Family to assist in the opening their facility at twenty-one thirty-four West Calina Boulevard. And before, I believe Mr. Debo is going to give us a presentation. But before we do, I just want to let everybody know that this came before the Finance Committee last week. There were some concerns from the members that there were some gaps in their insurance policies in the past. There was a concern about a lawsuit that was going forward. So we had asked MoED to put in some language about both of those, because we didn't feel comfortable that if we're going to use taxpayers' money, that we had to be clean on the other side. The business has to be working properly. So I believe language was put in there to address those situations. The math seemed to be okay, but we didn't want to move it forward because we didn't really know exactly how this was going to come out. So that's kind of how we got here today, moving it forward without a vote. So Mr. Debo was going to present some of the things that we had talked about in addition to the math and the incentives process.
Mr. Debo?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Aldermen and Alderwomen. You know, that was a, a really great Finance Committee, robust, and it was very helpful. So appreciate all that feedback. So we're here now to discuss the granting of a forgivable loan to Carnesaria El Paso Grande Corp. and the Rodriguez family to assist in the opening of the long-shutted, all these stores you heard about earlier. The resolution before you requests the granting of a forgivable loan of three hundred and twenty-five thousand And to the Rodriguez family, who now operate El Paso Grande Super Mercado at six thirty-four East New York, El Paso Chico Mercado at five oh eight Grove Street. As will be discussed later on in the presentation, the city will receive back a hundred percent of these funds. I want to start by talking really about maybe the next slide, the nature of a sales tax sharing agreement. So I, I think it'd be good in this presentation to kind of take our time and look at what the request is and look what we're doing here. So a sales tax sharing agreement really shares in taxes that don't exist today. There are no taxes if a business doesn't develop. So the sales tax sharing agreement says if, in fact, a vacant store opens, something to that effect, then we will share in the incremental taxes that are generated. A very good example of a sales tax sharing agreement was right next door at the old Cub Food. The old Cub Food store sat vacant for many, many years, as the Aldi did. What often happens in these deals is the entrepreneur comes to us in advance of making a decision to buy a property. And in the case of Cub Food, Lindsay Windows came to us and said they were considering other locations out of Aurora, and would we consider a sales tax sharing agreement? In that case, we came to the council, you did a great, and since that time, the city has realized order of magnitude on an annual basis, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in dollars, that wouldn't have happened had we not done that deal. We've done other sales tax sharing agreement, other, other deals with larger companies, Magic Woods, US Foods. And sometimes you're doing this because you're in a competitive environment, and there's other towns that are bidding, and sometimes you have to do it. I will say. I will say right now, without breaching any confidentiality, there's a large grocery store talking to us about a potential. And the first thing they asked us, pretty sophisticated people, is we certainly would expect some sort of sales tax sharing agreement. So that's what it is. This is a little bit different here, and I just want to say before I get to this last one, is obviously from a benefit, because whenever we come to you, it's always a yin and a yang. It's what they get, what we get, what they get, what we get. And so again, we're getting dollars that we never would get before. Let's hop to the next slide. So the El Paso business, and I don't want to repeat what a lot of people have said, and I, Jaime is going to speak, or there's going to be a video, I think, where we'll learn a little bit more about the business, but it really is an incredible story that goes back to the nineteen seventies when Jaime's father started this business. And again, they'll go through more detail of it, but to take a store that started in your house and to grow it into what is now, I would argue, the most or one of the most successful businesses in the entire city. And I'm going to measure success in this discussion in terms of revenue. And when we look at revenue, very often we look at revenue per square foot, because how else could you compare this and that? And on a per square foot basis, and again, you have to come to the store and take a look at what goes on over there, the amount of volume, I know, alderman Norman, you probably could relate to this, we're talking about a number like a thousand dollars per square foot. We're talking about eight hundred thousand people that come to the two stores on the east side. For perspective, the Paramount, maybe it's three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand people go to the Paramount. This is on two stores that combined are less than fifteen thousand square feet. You've got eight hundred thousand visitors that come. So when I look at success or popularity as measured by revenue, there's a lot going on here at the existing El Paso business. I'm trying to, I'm sure we'll talk more about some of the other details of the business. There's eighty employees at the existing businesses right now, and we've been in touch with the accountants, the lawyers, we're going to talk about some other things, as well as their bankers. So that's really about the east side. Let's hop to the next slide. These are the locations, you could see the store on the west side on Galena. I think Dan Dolan spoke pretty eloquently about the shopping center and what it's going to mean for the shopping center over there, vacant for all those years, and obviously the Cub Food, and then the stores on the east side, just to get a perspective. Got on the next one. Next slide is good. Again, another perspective, we could just keep going, you could see that's, okay, so that's the store outlined over there on the west side. And, you know, when speaking to their accounting firm and the projections for the west side, they got to believe that that store does at least as much business as the store on the east side. Again, the store on the east side together are less than fifteen thousand feet, this store is eighteen thousand feet. The first store, you know, El Chico, El Chico, was just a grocery store, is just a grocery store. El Paso Grande is a grocery store and a tremendous amount of prepared foods, tremendous, which the city receives full taxes on, on prepared foods. This store, Mas Grande, will have the grocery store, the prepared food, and also will make their own tortillas. So that's what the new store, and that store will do at least the volume, and I'm talking fifteen, sixteen million dollars a year, of the other two stores together. The city right now receives from the stores on the east side approximately twelve thousand dollars per month, per month, for the existing stores. For the new store, we're thinking at least twelve thousand dollars a month, maybe fifty, maybe sixteen thousand, we don't know, their projections, but clearly a tremendous volume. And if you look at those two stores together, and we were sitting here a year from now, and I hope we, we come and look and see how everything's going, because hopefully this store will open sometime in the next two months, you'll be talking about maybe thirty million dollars worth of business, and maybe almost two million people coming to these stores. You know, something that when you try to grasp of what's happening here, it's truly, in my mind, miraculous. I can't say more than what the people here said about the legacy of the company, the people they help, and so on. I will say that this process started not because Jaime came to us, but because people in the community came to us. We could hit the next slide. Again, I think this was spoken to pretty well. So we talked, I think I kind of jumped ahead a little bit about the financial story. Let me, let me go, let me start with the east side. So I'm sure people have read about grocery stores, and despite this high volume and these incredible numbers of people that come, these are very low margin businesses. You know, a business might make five percent, you know, likely a lot less than you're making in your I R A. This is not money coming, there's a lot of money turning, but there's just not a high profitability in these stores, and you have to do the kind of volume, you know, to, you know, to make these businesses successful. And that's really what's happening with the existing. I've looked at the financials, you do a high volume, and what you bring down to the bottom line is maybe five percent of that volume, and what happens to that money is that money gets recycled, so more groceries could be bought, and employees could be paid and things. So there's really, at any given time, not a lot of cash on hand in a business like this. The money is coming in and it's coming out. You know, the west side, we talked about the projections for the west side. One of the reasons we're here now is that Dan mentioned about some of the challenges just organically, generically, that has happened over the last couple of years in terms of business, just business in general, and, you know, trying to get supplies, interest rates, all this, what's going on. Aside from that, and let me just say, that the family has poured their entire resources into this new store. We're talking about something in the order of magnitude of four million dollars borrowed, you know, most, a lot of it borrowed, some of their own equity, but S B A loans, different loans, but they've been paying on those loans. So the, any dollars, any extra dollars that are generated from the east side store has been going for the last two and a half years to service the west side store, to get it open. The hope was this store was going to be open eighteen months ago. But again, COVID, the supply chain, and there has been certain challenges that have occurred. One of the challenges in the west side store, is a store that they own, there were some uninsured losses of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so for a roof, and that's had to be repaired, it's been repaired, some bills are still outstanding, and part of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be to pay that. There was a fire on the east side of the store, and that was insured, but the disruption in that store and how the prepared food had to be now prepared offsite in another location, more labor, more difficulty, more management time and so on, trying to do all this stuff. Before I go on, you know, you think about the volume, and is this a small business or is it a big business? It really is a family, small business, so it's not like there's layers and layers of middle management to deal with all these issues. So that happened in terms of the fire. The other thing that happened was unfortunately, the company was a victim of a fraud during the COVID period, as we all remember how hard it was to get material and to get equipment. And in order to try to get the store open, Jaime went to, I would call the person a middleman, who represented a very large company, and gave them five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, some of it again came from the loan, some of it came from the money generated in the store. And the bottom line is the, the equipment was never delivered. Was it good faith, whether it's naivete, I mean, we could say a lot of things. Clearly, you got to go back to that time in terms of when people needed equipment and were trying to get equipment, and that's what he was trying to do. We'd been in touch with his attorney, and we have information, it was marked confidential, I was able to speak to some of you before this meeting, but letters from the attorney explaining all the efforts that Jaime made, you know, daily call, where's my equipment, where's my equipment, and always was told, even the attorney thought, boy, this is probably going to happen, and it turned out it didn't happen. The attorney has prepared a lawsuit, which is about to be filed when we, one of the things that the committee brought up is, is this a criminal fraud? And their law firm did not think, because it was unclear whether this was repeated offenses or not, whether or not it would be a criminal litigation kind of thing, but they are happy and they will go to the Attorney General, the FBI, local police, to see what they could do. But really, the idea is can they recover any of those dollars? And again, are there dollars to be recovered from, would I, you know, from the, from the gentleman who committed the fraud? I would doubt it. It is possible, and it, again, at the request of the Finance Department, the Finance Committee, we did put in the R D A that if there are dollars to be recovered there, then we would utilize those dollars to try to pay this loan back earlier. The challenge, and I want to be very clear with everybody here, we are online with a lender, and the lender very often is the big tuna here, and you imagine, I haven't, I have to say, I haven't read all those loan documents, but I'm sure they've got these guys going and coming, any dollar that comes out, comes to us first. Now, there is a possibility of restructuring those loans, but believe me, if we have a shot at getting any of that money back early, we will do it, and we have the rights in this agreement to go do it. We're on very good, it's a Wintrust Bank, we're in good terms with them, we're talking to the attorneys, we're talking to the accountants. So we're, but when something like this happens, you experiment liquidity, I mean, think about it, if it's four hundred thousand dollars to keep the business rolling, and you take five hundred thousand dollars and you try to buy equipment, you don't get the equipment, you got to buy it again, and what you have to do is retrofit your space, because originally it was fitted for the original equipment, now it's for the new equipment, and our inspector's coming in, you got to change this, you got to change this, so it takes a lot of effort. So it's really just caused a squeeze. I think to one of the questions about the business and the viability of the business, this business is going to survive, this is, this is going to survive regardless. But at the end of the day, it's tighter, and now we want to get the store open. And for every month that goes by that we don't open up the store, is costing the city about twelve thousand dollars every month that goes by. So if the business has to take money from the east side location and squirrel it away each month to get enough money to have this three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars liquid to buy the equipment, the food and the things they need to finish it, will we be here six months from now, eight months from now? I don't know. But it's going to be a long time, and it's time to get the store open, and that's really why we're here. I don't know what's, do we've got some more? Okay. Yeah, so I think we've kind of gone over some of this stuff. You know, a lot of the aldermen have asked some very good questions. Why this business and not another business? Because a lot of businesses have hurt and a lot of businesses need. And there's a lot of answers to that, and it's always a challenge. One thing I mentioned at the Finance Committee is that very few businesses could sustain these kind of losses and have the ability to pay back from their sales, this kind of money. So you do this kind of volume, you can pay back the money, because if you have a small business that's doing four hundred thousand dollars and the equipment gets lost in a fire, it'd be very hard to pay the city back for doing, because you just don't do that kind of volume. When you do the kind of volume and you're generating money for the city, you can pay it back. So that was one reason. Another reason is what I just said, the opportunity loss for the city not doing this is why we would do this for this business and not another business. And again, not to say we don't, we don't, we consider everything at Moed and as part of the mayor's office. Other reasons really would have to do with, again, how significant this business really is to the city. I mean, this is a very significant, not just the legacy in terms of the kind of customer base that's served here. There are no businesses like this in the city, and, you know, that is another reason. I think we've got some other things here, the history and so on, I just, I don't want to be redundant, I've already taken a lot of time. Do we have some more here? Or is that, are we done? I don't know. We, okay, I think we put this slide in, we just wanted to, again, acknowledge a lot of the questions that have come up over the last couple of days. It is very important, when we suggest an incentive to the council, it really has a lot to do with the people that we're dealing with. You could have a good business plan, a lot of good things, but if you don't have the right people, you just don't want to be a partner with them, and these are the kind of people that we want to be partners with. And that's what we all do in the city, whenever we bring you something, we vetted the partner, and we vetted these people, and these are the right people to work with. We acknowledge, and I think alderman Bog, again, raised a very good point, Aurora's not a bank, we can't do this a lot, we don't want to do this a lot. And again, it's not the traditional deal that we've come to you, where we have a gap and we have to fill the gap and so on. But again, from the circumstances I mentioned, it is unique, and it is, we have an ability, and we will get our money back. Again, the opportunity loss of not helping, of not having this building, this business viable and operating is immeasurable. So in conclusion, I hope we don't have another slide, more slides, I can't believe it. I, I, I'm not going to go through this, I went through it, I understand it, it just shows payback timing and so on, we can go through any more detail we want. I just want to wrap up with any other questions, if anybody has.
Hello, my name is Jaime Rodriguez, and we're at El Paso Mas Grande. El Paso Mas Grande is the third store that my family has. We've had the other two stores basically all my life. My parents came from Durango in Mexico in the early eighties. My dad got a job at the Aurora Meat Packing Company. He saw an opportunity, and there was no grocery stores in our neighborhood. He bought the house across from where we used to live, and that became El Paso Chico. After a while, my father became very well-known in the community, selling authentic food and products from Mexico, and after that, he opened up El Paso Grande, which is the bigger store up until now. It's always been a dream of mine and my brother's to keep it going, start a new store. El Paso Mas Grande is not only a grocery store, we also make all our food in-house, there's a grab-and-go buffet, a juice bar, and a tortilla shop. I think my favorite part of the new store is the new services we're going to have in the buffet. Not only are we going to be able to give you all your favorite foods, we're also going to be able to, from those foods, make tacos, that's something we've never done. These are going to be tacos de guisado, so we'll put rice on there, we'll put your favorite meat or guisado on there, and I think that's going to be everybody's favorite part.
So just want to thank Jaime, the family, everybody that's come out to talk, want to thank the mayor's office, Mayor Alex Alexander, our staff that has worked just, just a tremendous amount, making sure that we had all the facts. But with that, I just want to open it up for any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Debo? Alderman Frankel?
Just want to make a comment. So when this came before the Finance Committee, I had some real concerns about the insurance cap, the fraudulent, you know, thing with equipment, which had we invested before, that would have cost us seven hundred thousand dollars between the two of them. The wording in here now. The wording in here now basically fills that gap. It'll, it'll basically tighten that up, that we're going to be involved with the insurance, we're going to be involved with the lawsuit a little bit. So if we, like you said, if we do, if they do win the lawsuit, we'll get some of our money back from there. And the insurance thing should be covered going forward. It was kind of a strange thing that all these things happened. I did, that was very uncomfortable, but now we cleaned that up. To the other point, which I think was a good point, I think Alderman Bog brought it up, as you mentioned, why this one, why not downtown where we've been going? So, you know, from, in my opinion, you've got to bring a compelling and unique argument. I think, in my mind, I think you've accomplished that, why this one and not others. You made a really good argument of that. So personally, based on what we've seen in the new wording in there and the argument you made and how it's going to be to the community, I think I, I would certainly want this to go forward, because I think it's going to be good for the community with that new verbiage in there that you guys put in, because that, that's, that's a big deal. We can't have any gap, we can't have any shortcuts with taxpayers' money. And this cleans that up a little bit, so I feel much better about that now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Smith?
Not so much a question as a comment. First of all, to Mr. Dolan's point, we'll be filling this ALDI that is not currently filled. And it's hard sometimes, we sit up here making decisions, and we can't make decisions based on our hearts. But when you hear a story about you guys, your family, I was able to read some things today, my understanding is your dad was shot and killed at that store after work one night. Your family has put everything they have into this business, and that's a rarity in today's time. You know, we've got big box stores and, you know, we sit here and we, we make decisions on subdivisions and malls and shopping centers and casinos. And you know what? If we can't get to the grassroots of a family like yours and make the decisions to help you guys move forward, I don't know what it is we're doing. I do not feel at all irresponsible with taxpayers' money, helping your family, because I believe that you deserve and have earned the help, and that money will come back. So we are doing what's responsible. We are going to help you guys move and expand your business into the next phase. So thank you for being here. Thank you for all that you've done for our city. And I'm, I didn't know all these numbers until Mr. Debo went over those with me today. So you guys have an amazing business, and thank you so much.
Alderman Payne?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, thank you, Dave, for adding all the details in the memo. And just from my understanding, when we say about, things about the settlement or compensation, it'll be a formal process where we will add city's name, right? It's not on our system?
No, no. Yes, we'll be documenting more. It, it just got sort of complicated as, because we had the Finance Thursday and, and, you know, here we are today. We've got to review some of the, you know, rights and obligations of the bank. And, but we have the right and we've sent our information to the bank and said, we are, we, this is our position. And this is what we, you know, again, they're in the process of restructuring one of the loans, and our hope is that the loan gets restructured. So there is a clear, clear path without them. But they did lend, you know, as part of their loan documents, at least half of the money, the 568, at least half of it, closer to $300,000 was part of their loan. So they can take the position, I need to get that money back first. But to the extent that they've restructured the loan and that they're getting paid back anyway, we'll argue that that's double counting and that we should be able to get some of those proceeds. But it will, it will be documented in that way.
And if you or the petitioner could share what kind of equipment it was, it'd be very helpful for us to know.
Yeah, it, it was the tortilla maker. It was, it was the tortilla, so the very sophisticated machine that was doing it. And again, everything was programmed in the infrastructure to do it. So they'll be making, you know, my understanding is they do a little bit of that now, but they will be making their own tortillas. It'd be really, just, it's just going to be this incredible shop, but that's what it was. It was a tortilla, tortilla maker, so that they could sell fresh tortillas right there.
And if this goes forward, what would be the expected open date?
We're really hoping within the next couple of months, because a lot of this, these dollars are going to go to buy the produce, to buy the food. Yeah, and we've got to clear up a bill, we've got to put in a hood, and, you know, we're, we're really very close to, you know, ready to go. Again, this has been the better part of three years.
Thank you so much.
What is the wish of the council? Alderman Bog, you had a question or a comment?
I do, thank you. Is Mr. Dolan still here?
No, he did, he had to go.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Dolan, if you're listening. Thank you for coming and sharing. I think we mentioned that at Finance, we wanted to know some background from the previous owner of the building, so that was very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Debo, for putting this together, listening to the committee with our questions, inquiries. The only thing I have left on this, and I appreciate the family so much, their story, their heart, what they put into this. When you get into these legalese, it's, it's, you know, it's maddening sometimes. But a, a point was brought up that with the lawsuit, the city cannot make the petitioner continue the lawsuit. It's, it's not legal to do that. You can't make someone file a lawsuit. However, there can be language in there that there is a good faith effort for them to continue filing those funds. That's the only thing we can put in. Like I said, you can't make someone pursue a lawsuit. But given the fact that we're going down this path with this loan, with these numbers, I believe a good faith clause would be appropriate. I, I don't feel that the family would object. I think, I think they want to go down that path. But Alderman Franco said, we, we need to have a few assurances in there. So.
I, I think, let's amend, and I, hopefully, we could make that as part of this vote. But, but I will tell you, and I, I'm not sure what, again, it was so quick since Thursday's meeting and today, but we, we do have, and the, the alderman that I was able to meet today, and it was kind of rushed, I was, we, we have the complaint. So the complaint is drafted, we have it. It just was marked confidential, so that's why we didn't circulate it to the public. It, it's ironic, because lawyers cost money, as you know. And, you know, we said to the attorney, let's just get this store open. Let's start this cash coming in. We'll have the money to pay you and so on. But they literally have the completed complaint. It's 15 pages. I will, you know, share it with you. And there's no, they are raring to go. I mean, they actually, I want to just take, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm going to take it a little further. They actually got a, a confession of judgment essentially from this plaintiff. I mean, he's acknowledged that he's done, these lawyers have been chasing him for two years. And they got him to sign something that said, I'm responsible. That said, whether this guy has any money, whether he's going to show up, who knows? But to your point, no problem putting some good faith, because the attorneys certainly are, I mean, ready to go. When I called them, they were like, ready to, Dave, we want to, you know, file this lawsuit. We're, there's a letter that they sent me, which I think I've, I quoted to some of them, where, you know, they just described how even they were taken in by this guy. Because the company that was representing, the, the, the equipment is a major company. So he, this guy represented himself as the, as the person. And then, of course, now the, the company's not acknowledging anything and so on. But they've been through it. So they, the research is done, the money has been spent by the company to, to put this complaint together. So we'll make sure it gets filed.
If I may, Alex Alexander, Chief Management Officer. Alderman Bog, to your point, I just want to highlight that El Paso agreed to the inclusion of paragraph six, the repayment of forgivable loan upon recovery on claim for non-delivered equipment. It's on page 12, specifically calling your attention to 6C, where it says, in the event that the grocer or any party acting on behalf of the grocer recovers, whether through settlement, litigation, mediation, arbitration, or otherwise, any funds or receives any form of compensation from vendor or any related party due to the non-delivery of the equipment, such recovery of compensation will be subject to the terms set forth in another section, 6B6, which basically obligates them. So it goes a bit beyond just limited to litigation. So I think your experience, and you know, we've had this happen too, where, you know, lawyers have different methods. They do a demand letter, they'll send a, sometimes they'll attach a draft complaint, and sometimes they'll agree to mediate. But we have enough showing of good faith here. I mean, if you want, we can actually put that language in. But we, in a very short time, the, the folks agreed to put in a lot of language, putting the city in a really good position with the lender and with the prospect, whether they actually file it or settle, we have the, the assurance in there. Yeah, and I understand that this language is more so for the family and less for the lawyers. You know, this would not happen, but once we hand out the loan and, you know, the family is not lawyers, they, they're grocers, and they're in that business, and that's what they're going to do. So, you know, you don't want them to be like, well, the lawsuit's not important anymore, we have the loan. And, you know, that becomes a secondary thought and pursuit. We want that, like I said, just an assurance, good faith assurance that we continue on.
Any other questions? Alderman Garza?
What I want to say is thank you to Mr. Debo for doing this presentation. This is excellent presentation, and it's all true. These two stores, El Paso Chico and El Paso Grande, are in second world for almost like 40 years. So since I lived in Aurora 27 years ago, I know the East store was very successful. And I know these people is the honest people, a hard worker people, and I know Señora Celia, she is the handler of the tortilla factory. And I know it's, it's a lot of work what they do. And doing this presentation is very nice to my colleagues, understanding why they're asking for this kind of help. So I understand it's a taxpayers' money, but this is for a good case, and this is going case by case all the time. So thank you, Mr. Debo. Thank you, and thank you, Alex, for this explanation, because I know all is true, what the people say, what the, all the people are talking about. They're helping a lot to the community. They have a lot of employees, and they want to have more employees as soon as they open the store. And beside that, the food is excellent, the service is excellent, and the tortilla factory everyone is waiting for, because all the parties, all the weddings, they ordered a lot of tortillas, fresh tortillas for the events. So we're waiting for that as soon as possible. Thank you.
What's the sense of the city council?
Unfinished?
Unfinished? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, I was, I was, well, first of all, I just want to thank Mr. Debo for making some time this afternoon to talk through some of these details and look forward to getting some of the other documents. I was going to ask for this to be unfinished. You know, the, I'll, I'll say that the thing I like about this is that we are working with a local business versus bringing somebody outside in. That being said, I do still have some concerns during Finance. There was a slippery slope argument that was made, and, and I feel like that warrants being discussed. To me, this strikes me as a successful business that might have overreached a little bit in their expansions. They've had some bad luck and they, and they've made some bad decisions. So that being said, you know, the, the question now becomes is, is should the taxpayers fill in the gap? And then what is our return on investment? The only other thing I might articulate in an email, I think, I, I do have some questions about that $12,000 a month, because I think we might be over-assessing there. This isn't a food desert. I think that point was also made during Finance Committee, you know, that we might actually, just by adding this, just be drawing either from some of the west side locations, either the, the ALDI right there or the, the Jewel. But also even some of the east side customers, people that are west side customers that are driving currently to the east side. I think that's probably going to happen. Another point, I'm glad that someone spoke and said that they are currently driving from the west side to the east side and that they want this over there, because the majority of the people that I talked to when I walked Ward Five were interested in a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods, which is a much heavier lift. You know, and as I look at the whole city as a whole, the place we're probably losing the most revenue is on the west side. We're probably losing revenue to, to Woodman's, and we're probably losing revenue on the east side to Costco. So I don't, I don't know that I'm convinced that this is going to bring in that much revenue from North Aurora, Oswego, and, and other cities into, into this grocery store. So I'm, I'm happy to look at the math later, but, you know, I just, I, I have those concerns, and I want to go with the insurance thing.
No question. The, you know, speaking to the accounting firm and the market research that they've done, and the demand in Montgomery, Yorkville, Oswego, the, the feeling is they would, you know, I spoke a little bit today, there is something about a business owner. How many times have we seen a restaurant sell? And, and then all of a sudden, it's not the same restaurant, and people stop coming. So just because it's a store, it doesn't mean anybody else who would take over a store like that would have what this family has to drive, to drive this kind of business. The other thing, if you look at any of the stores that, you, you mentioned Trader Joe's, but if you look at any of the stores, we, other stores, which I have a lot of respect for the, you know, the Jewels, the Marianos and so on. But if you look at the volume that this store does per square foot versus any of those stores, this is a multiple of those stores. So whether you had a Trader Joe's here or not, this is a tremendous, this is like some of the largest volumes that you'll see anywhere. So again, I think this is a unique and special situation, not necessarily comparable to some of those other chains.
Okay, unfinished?
Mayor Protem?
Okay, any other, yes, Alderman Warman?
I sit on Finance Committee, and I, I would admit that I was a little apprehensive at first, as I read through the information from here. Always like to intend on saying yes, just because I think, you know, that's, I'm for economic growth. The more I looked at this, the more I, I thought about it, and then hearing today what, what you said and what the speaker said and things like that, this is, to me, the epitome of what Aurora is, a small business community. These people have been here 40 years, and to say no to them, I think, is, is a travesty, because whether they do the $12,000 a month in, in revenue or in sales tax, I mean, they're going to pull from other places. I mean, it's, it's nonsense to think that they're not going to pull from these other communities to make up any kind of difference. But these guys wanted to be there. Like, we, we're outside begging people to come in here. These guys want to be here. And I think it's a unique, unique situation of what's happened to them, and it was almost like unfathomable to think about that they could have that many items that, you know, was bad luck for them or something like that. I think it's, it's a good thing, and I think this is what, it's easy to sit up here to say yes to these large corporations that, you know, and, and these big developments, to sit here and see who this is going to affect, you know, from a family, from a, a small business ownership and, and knowing what this will bring to the west side, I think this is a positive thing for us, and I think we all should vote yes on this. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Alderman Chover?
Thanks, Mayor Protem. And thank you, David Debo, for all the work that you and the staff did and AA. I'm also on the Finance Committee, and it was a very robust discussion that we had on Thursday. I think it was about 45 minutes on just this one topic. So one thing that I will say for sure is, I'm looking at this from an underwriter standpoint. I've already looked at it from an alderman's standpoint last week, so I'm just looking at the numbers right here. From the people I've talked to in the public, I think the problem is the word forgivable loan. They're not really understanding what that is. So just to kind of put it out there, I mean, all the money that we're giving, this 325, if everything passes, the city of Aurora is being paid back for this in full. There's a timeline in the documents that we have. Again, I'm an insurance underwriter. I feel good about the insurance portion. There were some unfortunate things that happened, but I've been in insurance for 11 years, and those things do happen. I feel really good about the addendum that was put in here, that the city of Aurora is going to be added as a, a name to additional insured, so that squares away all the problems that I had. I think, to kind of piggyback off of what Alderman Warman said, every week that we delay this from getting them this money to get this open is another month that we're losing out on this $10,000 to $12,000 a month. It's been vacant for seven years. I don't have a It's been vacant for seven years, I don't have a calculator in front of me, but you all can do the math at home, that's a lot of money that the city of Aurora is losing out on. The sooner we can get them opened up, the better it is for the employees that are going to start working there, better it is for that entire area. I grew up in Ward Five, there definitely needs to be a little bit more diversity over there. I have no issues with this at all, and again, from an underwriting standpoint, the numbers look good, the insurance portion is good, I think we need to get this moved along so we can get the store open. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Mesiacos?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate that presentation, Mr. Debo. Just want to verify something, because I wasn't at the Finance Committee in that robust conversation. What is the status of the build-out at this point in that, in that space? I mean, I'm thinking they would have applied for permits, drawings, and applied for a permit to get that space ready to be a grocer. So at this point, I mean, are they finished, what degree are they in completion with that permit? Are they, are they fully built out?
They're just about built out. They're, they're just about.
Can we get some conversation, some verification from someone on staff, maybe in the building department, I don't know who, what, in terms of where they're at right now? I feel a bit more comfortable knowing it's just maybe, is it just a hood install? I mean, the other, I mean, there's plumbing, electrical involved with this type of an operation? Some additional HVAC, especially when you're talking hoods?
Yeah, thanks, Council, and thanks for the question. Alderman Mesiacos, John Curley, Chief Development Services Officer, Building Departments in my group. The rough, many of the rough inspections have passed, we're ready for finals in several of the trades. There were some issues with the piece of equipment, and then changing out the piece of equipment that's now coming in lieu of the one that was planned for. So there are some mechanical, rough inspections that we're still sorting out, but they are well along with their build-out, and I expect them to open relatively soon.
So the estimation, or guesstimation, I should say, from Mr. Debo in regards to a couple of months, I mean, how realistic?
It's reasonable, yes.
Okay, all right. So you don't see any other major type of construction-type ticket items that might pop up that might hold it up another two, three months, and they're trying to figure out a, we're doubting some funding? Because right now, we're looking at a, we're the third in line for, for, I mean, for payment? There's two other people in line for a loan repayment?
Again, that issue regarding, regards any kind of settlement, and it, we're really second in line, because those two loans are the same, it's an SBA loan and Wintrust, so it's, they're really one entity in front of us. So to the extent that there are dollars, we would either be behind them, or if we're fortunate, we could convince them, or the way they structure the loan, we could be first in line.
Okay, well, what I'm trying to get at is, there's not another RDA coming, like, three, four months down the road, because something else unfortunately came up at this juncture. It seems like there's, there's been a few battles for, for this owner and developer of this property.
I think this is, this is.
So, I mean, pretty much.
We're at the finish line.
Okay.
Alderman Zell?
Thank you, Chairman Protem. I just want to make a quick, a couple of quick comments. First off, thank you, Mr. Debo, for spending some time with me this afternoon, kind of explaining, going through the numbers on this. The one concern I really had was, came from Alderman Bug about opening Pandora's Box, how do we, how do we help this company and don't maybe help another company? And there was a couple of things that we talked about this afternoon that I just wanted to highlight, that kind of helped, helped me along. First off, we actually have a local company. We have a local company, and the key thing is, they're expanding. They're not just asking, you know, to do a little fix-up on their existing store, they're expanding their footprint in Aurora, and I think that's great. The other part of it, I learned from our colleague, Alderman O'Connor, to look at percentages, look at the percentages. And when you look at the size of the investment that this family has made in this facility of $4 million, and what they're asking us for, I believe we're somewhere under 10%, which I think is a number that, that bodes well, and that we've been comfortable in the past. So, thank you.
I think that the conversation you and I had today really, and I meant to mention it, because you opened my eyes, not because I learned, learned a lot from Alderman O'Connor about that, but, you know, that's not a bad measure when you talk about other businesses, is anybody who has that kind of ratio, here's somebody putting in four, how many, how many businesses in Aurora would put $4 million and maybe need $300,000 to get over the finish line? And we find another one like that, we'll, we'll talk to them. And I think that was your point, and that was a good point.
Okay, unfinished then.
Okay. Any other business for the Finance Committee?
That concludes the Finance Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Frankel. As Chair of the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee, I will give the P H T, P H S and T Committee Report. We met on July ninth, 2024, we had three items. The first two are related, 24 dash zero four seven one, a resolution establishing maximum number of Class D downtown core onsite consumption liquor licenses, unofficially related to the application from River Street Italian Inc., DBA Giardino Pizzeria and trattoria at 12 North River Street, Ward Two, and 24 dash zero four seven two, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D downtown core onsite consumption.
Consent.
Liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from River Street Bistro Inc., DBA Touche French Creole at Sixth North, Sixth North River Street. The first one is offering a mid-range dining, there's open, a full service, they plan on opening in October with outdoor seating, and it'll be full-service Italian, and they're having lunch and dinner to start. The second one is opening up November, and again, this is a full-service French Creole restaurant, they're opening up with outdoor seating and dinner only to start with the full bar, full bar. Kelsey is here to answer any questions that you might have for these two. Consent?
Consent.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey, on consent then. And the last one is 24 dash zero five one one, resolution establishing maximum number of Class D Fox Valley Mall Entertainment District liquor licenses, unofficially related to the application from Bit Enterprises Inc., DBA Bit Theater at 4034 Fox Valley Center Drive.
Consent.
This is an owner change, they have two comedy theaters there. In the lobby, they serve minor food, like pizza and the like, and then the owner, Patrick Stinson, is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Consent.
Consent? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and that is the complete P H S and T Committee Report. The next one would be Chairwoman Juanita Garza, do you have the I and T Committee Report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We met on July eighth. The first item, and the item is 24 dash zero zero eight zero, a resolution authorizing the use to cyber technology solution at the city primary law, Walter Scoville vendor and total aggregate amount not to exceed $100,000.
Consent.
Consent?
Consent.
Okay.
24 zero five zero one, a resolution authorizing Aurora Sign Company to fabricate and install a new foresight projection sign in the city hall facility for $121,825.65, we are 10% contingency of $12,182.56.
Consent.
Mr.?
Alderman Bug?
Yeah, can we get a staff presentation on this?
I have someone from staff willing to, please.
Good evening. One of the Big Gonzalez Facilities Superintendent Maintenance. This is a new sign replacing the old inadequate sign at the front of City Hall Building. This will be a new LED lighted fixture with foresighted visible signage, LED interior with a steel frame and aluminum fabrication on the outside. This will give us a visual from four different directions on the building, and be able to illuminate and get more information out to the residents and passerbyers. Any questions?
I see the award letter, and it says that Aurora Sign Company has done projects in the past, and we asked them to develop a signage solution to resolve the current limitations. So this did not go out for a request for proposals?
They had been doing the work on our, on two other locations, our customer service facility on McCoy, and also the new Slope Theater, and we asked them as part of the co-op that they are part of, to get us a pricing and come up with a design for the City Hall Building.
Okay, so they, they won awards on other signs?
Correct.
And then we asked them?
To come in and give us an idea of what we can fabricate to fit our building, our town, which they are currently existing, and also that we can centralize and have a centralized communication, and also operating system that we currently have in the city, without having to go out and do something different.
Okay. I believe.
So Watchfire is a brand of digital signs, Jolene Coulter, City Director of Purchasing. Watchfire is a brand, it's a digital signage brand. Equalis has a cooperative that Watchfire is a part of, which is allowing us, and they actually have a contract with Aurora Sign to do the work. So they actually, that's who their preferred vendor is to do the work locally. Regionally, that's what we use, so.
Okay, so we're going along those lines from the other two signage contracts that we have?
And we've used Aurora Sign for other displays, I think we did it Ward One, I think for yours, we bid it at that point in time. Watchfire was not under a contract or a cooperative contract at that time, they are now, so any, like, future signage, we can always look at that as an option for digital sign.
Okay, that's fine. Can we have attachments from the other contracts added on to this for review? Just uploaded?
From the Stope Island, or from, which ones are you looking at?
Yeah, from both, I guess.
Okay, I can look for those and get those attached.
Upload them, yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Consent or unfinished business?
Okay, next item is 24 dash.
Is it unfinished?
Oh, it's unfinished.
The item we placed unfinished.
Okay. Next item, 24 dash oh five oh eight, a resolution to award the Kitting Drive Water Main Improvement project located in Ward Nine to Performance Construction Engineering LLC to the bid amount of $647,770.0.
Consent.
The item we placed on consent?
Next item, 24 dash oh five one three, a resolution to award the contract for the Benton Street and Water Street intersection improvement to Landmark Contractors Incorporated and 1116 West Main Street, Huntley, Illinois, 60142, or the amount of $492,293.0.
Consent.
The item we placed on consent?
Next item, 24 dash oh five one five, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to execute an agreement with RC Wongman, an amount not to exceed $4,148,794 for construction management services in the first bid package of the River Age Park Phase Two expansion.
Consent.
Consent? The item we placed on consent?
Okay, they conclude the meeting, Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you. Then we have the Chair, Ron Warman, to give the wrap committee report.
Thank you. Rules and Administration and Procedures Committee met on July second, 2024, and reviewed the following items. 24 dash zero four eight three, a resolution authorizing the reappointments of Brian Failing, Fernando Castron, and Clara Diaz to the Fox Walk overlay district design.
Consent.
Consent. The item we placed on consent?
Next item, 24 dash zero four eight seven, a resolution approving the reappointments of Megan Paul and Rafael Blanco to the Aurora Public Art Commission.
Consent.
The item we placed on consent?
Next item, I believe is for information only, but 24 dash zero four eight nine, recommendation to approve Aldermanade aid for the Office of Alderman. Am I correct in saying that's a information only?
For information only, yes.
Next item is 24 dash zero four nine one, a resolution approving the appointment of Daniel, Daniel Olivera to, to the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council.
Consent.
Consent, the item we placed on consent?
Next item, 24 dash zero four nine five, a resolution approving the reappointment of Alderman Bill Donnell to the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Can we get a presentation on this?
Yeah, presentation. Does this need to be? Very brief. Unfinished.
Unfinished?
Consent.
The item we placed on unfinished.
Next item, 24 dash zero four nine six, a resolution approving the reappointment of Brennan Roberts, Ivan Chambers, and Donald Pilmer to the Aurora Planning and Zone Division.
Consent.
Consent, the item we placed on consent?
Next item, 24 dash zero five zero five, an ordinance establishing the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific and Dia, Pacific Islander Advisory Board, A A N P I, under Chapter Two, Article Six of the Code of Order.
Consent.
Consent?
Mayor Protem, I got a question. Did we really put zero four nine five on unfinished?
Somebody said unfinished.
Was that in jest?
There was a joke. No, 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 I said, no, I asked for a presentation.
No, no, I thought. No, but I heard, I heard somebody say that, but I didn't know it was in jest. That's fine, but I want to make sure, because I thought this was a, this was a no-brainer, but that's fine. What are we doing?
Since Alderman Donnell is the one being voted, we would put it on unfinished.
Because of that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
And to get a presentation on that as well, so.
I just wanted a quick question on zero, zero four nine six. I know that Ivan Chambers represents, this governing body is supposed to be reflective of some of the other governing bodies here. I know that Ivan represents the Fox Valley Park District. I'm not sure about Brennan Roberts or Mr. Pilmer, just curious if anybody from staff, what governing bodies they might represent.
Brennan Roberts is a neighbor of mine, he lives in Ward Eight, he's a returning appointment, and has done a wonderful job, but I can leave that to you, AA, to, to speak further on that?
Yeah, all the relation, I don't believe that the requirement on planning zoning is necessarily that appointees are representative of governing bodies. Mr. Pilmer is the, I believe, second Vice President or the Vice President of Old Second Bancorp. Ivan Chambers, as you said, is, I believe, the equity, I forget his exact title at the, at the Park District, and Mr. Roberts has been on for quite a while. I know he's a resident, I just apologize, I don't know his occupation.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not trying to put this on unfinished, I was just curious.
Yeah, they're at large representatives.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Consent?
Consent.
Okay, any other business to come before the wrap committee?
That concludes wrap committee.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Warman. A new business, 24 dash zero five two seven, we have a resolution approving the appointment of Kevin Nicola as Deputy Fire Chief?
Consent.
Consent.
Consent, okay, this item will go on consent. And then we have the Alderman's Corner, which happens to be Ward Six, myself presenting. So, okay. So hope you brought your popcorn, because it'll be intermission. Do I just start it? Okay. Okay. I'll give you the V D, DVD.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the Ward Six presentation this evening. As I mentioned, this is my ward, the sixth ward that I represent. I'm sure most of you know I have three out of the four historic districts, although I share the Tanna District with Alderman Donnell and Alderman, Alderman Garza. We also have the Rill Highlands Historic District and the Palace Historic District, and I think you're well aware that the City Council has granted a total of funding for this, these historic districts of $327,000, which is a market improvement over the previous years. The Wilkinson Food Pantry is in my ward, located on Highland, they recently received a $1.8 million expansion, beginning in the fall of 2023. Plans include handicapped accessible restrooms, increased food storage, shelving, and room for educational gatherings. They do a fine job in servicing the, the community that are in need of food and these types of services. We also have Marie's Urban Garden. This last twenty-three, this last year, 2023 harvest, they produced and grow over 12,829 pounds that they gave their clients, 110,132 individuals were served, they also had deliveries for food for the seniors in the amount of 2,547, and they also gave away pet food, 11,135, 134 pounds. And the garden is going strong once again this year. Last year, they had over 300 volunteers helping out. The newest park was just dedicated last October, the Chet and Judy Albright Park on October. It's a welcome green space in my ward and that part. We did have a. We did have a four unit in that area, which had numerous crimes for service and the city took it down and we put up a park instead. And Coach Wilbert Walters Park on May Street, we have a new splash pad installed, we also have an ice rink in the wintertime that the, the families can use. We have a new Dunkin' Donuts coming, the former Arby's and Title Max on North Lake Street, part of the corridor there. And we have a new restaurant that the City Council just approved in the corner of Lake and Indian Trail, 1218 North Lake Street. Mexican food is going to be their specialty, we can't wait to have them open. And the Redwood of Aurora is moving forward, this is an $18 million development, the last of the farmland for the sixth ward on Indian Trail and Randall, next to the Walgreens. There'll be 198 new rental homes and it's going to be great. We have some renderings here of what it's going to look like and then we have the existing construction of what we're, we're seeing right now in, in two of the slides, so. Todd School, which is no longer in the sixth ward, but now in the second ward, has, has opened up, VNA recently moved in there. I was instrumental in helping staff, focused our intention to saving the WPA murals, we have seven WPA murals that have been saved as well as two statues. However, the requirement has been that we put up duplicates, so that's what you're seeing here. So the original ones are safe until we restore them. And the clicker's not, okay. We just had our Ward Six cleanup, June 8th, from 8:11 a.m. at McCleary School, we collected 8.89 tons of collection of junk and trash. So we, I like to say we Feng Shui'd the sixth ward that day a little bit. And then the three Aldermen partnered once again, the West Side Aldermen, Alderman Frankel, Donnell and Seville, at June 29th, 2024, at Jefferson Middle School. For the document shredding, almost 10,000 pounds of documents were shredded that day. In the summer, we have bookmobile stops and we, they come at the, the sixth ward. And Mondays at 10 a.m., 9 a.m. to 10 a.m. in Arrowood Park, they do storytime and they do music and read alouds as well. Also, other stops in my ward are Mondays at McCullough Park and in conjunction with SciTech. And also, we have Plum Park, the food bank is there, offering free, free meals for age, for youth ages 18 and under. We also have summer camps in the city, in the sixth ward, they'll be at the Hill Elementary School, first to fifth grade. And there are other areas, of course, in East Side School District and Indian Prairie and Oswego that also have summer camps. At National Night Out, once again, we'll have three locations, Arrowood Park and McCarty Mills with Cameo Park. We have the Northwest Territories Neighbors and we have Randall at West Monomoy and Randall Road and all, there's always ponies for the kids, which the kids really love. And then lastly, I gave another grand, the sixth ward fund for the Aurora Cemetery. Once again, we had older trees falling down and the idea was to grant the, the monies to the West Aurora Cemetery Board so they can take down these older trees and, and prevent them from being damaging the, the monuments. And then lastly, we once again had our Ukulele Festival, this time we had it in May, as opposed to August in previous years, and we had it indoors at Two Brothers Roundhouse from 11 a.m. to 6 p.m. And that seems to be generally well-received from the comments that we receive, not only from the, the people that attended, but the people that actually perform. So next year, the committee will choose to have it at the Roundhouse again as well. So we were able to increase our turnout and present really nice ukulele music as well as numerous workshops for people that wanted to study and to learn the ukulele. We had children and parents of all ages attending, so it was, and some of the Aldermen came as well, so we appreciate seeing you. And that is the Aldermen's Corner from the sixth ward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. There's no need for a closed session, is there a motion for adjournment of the meeting?
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, we adjourn at 6:34 p.m. Thank you, one and all.